All right, so we'll start with John. Why don't you state your name and then we'll go through who's here?
John Smollega.
Okay, next.
Melanie Jelen.
Oops, Kathy Roz.
Okay.
Sue Fitch.
Okay.
Attorney Brad Morris.
Sierra, you here?
Yes, Sierra Court Leon, I just said it two minutes ago, like a minute ago, can you hear me?
All right, so I will see Kathy Roz for Rob Horgan, since Rob doesn't seem to be here. That gives us the quorum of five, well, the quorum's three, but we have more than enough of five. Uh, so we'll start with approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three. Everybody read them?
Yep.
Um, I I have a question, Russ.
Go ahead, Sue.
I think the one for, the part of it for Dennis McDonald that said for September, continuance granted for September meeting, it should have been August, I believe.
Um, I know, we got that covered, we're good. Uh, Brad is here, the, the report is in, everything's good, so we could hopefully get through that and done tonight.
No, but I meant in the minutes, it said for September meeting.
Is that what we said? It doesn't, it probably?
No, we said August, I believe, but I think it says, in the minutes, it said September, I could be wrong.
Um, I will go back and check that, and if it's wrong, I will definitely, I will amend the meeting minutes.
Okay.
So if you want to approve them as amended, that, that's fine.
Okay, good catch, Sue, anything else?
Sorry, my dog was trying to bolt out the screen door. Um, no, I didn't see anything else.
Okay, great.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it right now, and Martinelli was continued till September, and I'm looking under Dennis McDonald was August regular meeting. So the Martinelli was right above it, so that's on page two of four at the very top.
So we're good?
We're, we're good.
Yeah.
But I, I definitely understand it.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July.
Second?
My second.
Hey, um, my wireless is going, I don't know what's going on, can, I'm just gonna log out and then come back in, I don't know, it keeps
Okay.
Saying something about the audio, so just so you know.
Alright, thanks.
Okay.
All right, I had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved, what's next?
Okay, next we have
Okay, Joe, Joe D'Amato, what?
Wait, actually, sorry, um, so yes, and yes, Joe Di Matteo, sixty-seven Squire Road, and we actually have, um, another letter that came in today requesting, um, I believe, is it another extension? Yes, it's another extension that was requested.
Okay, anybody, yeah, anybody have a problem with extending this till the September meeting? Can't believe it's September already. What happened in July? I think I slept here with that.
You got washed away.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, provide Mr. Di Matteo a, the, uh, extension until the September meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next?
Okay, just finishing writing that down, um, next you're going to
I know, poor, poor Julie.
Going back and forth, um,
Don't listen to me.
Um, and so anyway, Karen did note on the agenda that Jason Martinelli, um, she's keeping it there as a placeholder. You guys will hear a report on the remediation in September. And that brings us to Six Baker Road, and we have a newer application in. So, let me get to the top of that. So this just came in today.
Okay, so this is an amended application from, um, I believe March, was that when it first came in? Cause there's nothing written on top.
Um, the, I, I believe so.
Okay. And Brad is here, I believe.
Yes, yes, that's correct, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Mr. Morris, welcome, welcome to the Roxbury Wetland Commission, thanks for taking your time and, uh, and I read everything that came in today, and I want to thank you and Mr. McDonald for, uh, doing what the commission needed to get this to the, to the finish line.
Yeah, we do, yeah, go ahead. I, I was gonna say, thank, thank you guys, I know you're, you're really the ones that put in, uh, the time, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't do a lot of, uh, inland wetlands, um, uh, matters, so, um, you know, that's, so I was, it was very helpful to work with Gail to, uh, make sure sort of we were getting you what you needed. Um, and this information sort of, we were, we were, uh, trickling it in since the last time this matter was taken up. Um, and then I apologize for just getting you the, um, the soil scientist letter today. It was my error in thinking that this, this had been put over till the September meeting. Um, and so I didn't realize it was gonna be on today, and then when I saw the agenda, that's when I, I, um, I contacted Gail and said, hey, I have this letter, I just didn't submit it yet. So, um, anyway, that's how, kind of how we got to where we are today with this information, and I didn't intend to, um, kind of get this to you guys at the last second, I wanted, you know, to make that opportunity to, to review it.
Yeah, that's okay, it's good it came in. Um, and, and my advice to you is to stay away from wetlands. It's, it's a little rough. So, this is amended, is, is anything changed? I mean, we, we're, we're still talking about an accessory apartment, one, one apartment, the new septic system, which New Town Health has approved, and the driveway, right, is there anything else on here that, that came in, or?
No, I think the reason it was, it was amended, it was just be, because of the way, um, you know, when, when Gail and I were, excuse me, Attorney Tag, McTaggart, and I apologize, we're talking about this thing, she actually suggested doing it as a modification, and I think then when the, somehow that got to the, to, to my client, they ended up writing in amended. So I'm not sure that the, the application name is intended to mean it's amended, but what, what we're trying to get at is, is that we were submitting the additional information that, that everybody was requesting.
Right.
We were trying to get as much of it as we could on the map. Um, and so that's, that's why it was kind of, um, listed that way. If that answers your question.
It does, um, so Julie, you want to scroll down so we could look at it?
Absolutely. Do you want me to go right to the, uh, soil scientist report?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the commission, um, we did ask a so, a soil scientist to, um, to propose, he proposed a buffer area, and at the last meeting, a couple meetings ago, he said he would submit a plan, which was the disagreement we have with Mr. McDonald, that we never got the plan, when Mr. McDonald said we did, but that's okay, it's here now. Um,
So, so let me tell you, if you, if I may, um, you know, I, I contacted the soil scientists, and I said, you know, I, I wasn't involved, but I understand that you, um, you know, you spoke before the commission, and I said there were a couple questions that we needed answered, one, um, you know, they were looking to see what you were proposing for the plantings. Um, and two, um, y- you know exactly where and in what fashion you were, uh, giving your opinion on the buffer zone, and, um, and I said, you know, in a perfect world, we'd, we'd get something, we could actually put on the map, because I think they want to have it on the map. And he said, well, I could probably get it to you in a letter easier, because it's gonna be too much to, to put onto the map, so I said, that's fine. So then, uh, you'll see here on the eighteenth, he sent me this, this letter, um, trying to answer those, those two questions.
Okay. So you want to go down one, Julie, because I think he has the map next?
Um, actually, we had a map that was, this is a map that was submitted here.
Okay.
So let me expand that. I believe that's, this would be the herbaceous planting strip.
Yeah.
Right there.
I'm just gonna text Rob, because I'm wondering why he's not here. Usually he would tell me. Okay, you want to go to the next picture, so the commission could see the conditions? I did go out and look at this, and, and I would agree that the buffer that's there, the natural buffer is sufficient, I would agree with the soil scientist. Um, but any commission member who disagrees or, or just has questions, please, please speak up now, but you can see from those pictures, um, you know, why go rip all that out and then plant stuff that usually dies, and then the natural stuff comes back, and it's not evasives, which is great. And, and that is pretty heavy cover, so I'm satisfied, I, I, anybody else have a concern? I, I wish Rob was here, because he's the one who brought up about the buffer, he didn't want a lawn there, and you can see it's not a lawn, and the lawn that is there on the right, associated with the White House that's there, has its own buffer between the lawn and the wetlands. It's not as thick, it's not as five feet, it's probably two or three, but it's sufficient. Anybody have any questions?
Actually, Julie, can you, can you expand that picture, so we can get a better look at it?
How's that?
That's better, thanks.
Okay, I can go up one more if you need.
Yeah, give it a go.
There you go.
There. Okay, yeah, no, that looks good.
Yeah, I think it does.
That would be the last one.
So, c- can we just go back, Julie, I'm sorry, are you, are you finished with this one, John? I'm kind of bouncing between.
Yep, I'm good.
Um,
Where do you want to come from?
I think it's slide twenty-nine, and I'm just looking at the drawing with the house, and
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a new application. So the one that was in your agenda packet?
Oh.
This is different, this came in today.
Yeah, I know, I heard you say that, I didn't realize that, that this
Yeah, so there, so there, there might be diff, so there might be differences, I, I don't, I mean, we could go over to this one on page twenty-nine.
Oh, oh, um, well, the, is, is the drawing the same?
Um, I, I personally don't know.
I, I, I believe it is the same, um, I, I can't say a hundred percent, but I, I believe it is, is the same.
But this is the one that was submitted today.
Okay, and so, okay, this one, and I can't quite see, I'm sorry, if you can
Oh, no.
Go up zoom to zoom this in, so, I'm just, so, the, this is about the buffer zone, so I'm focused on this herbaceous planting strip. Um, and it's, so it says, if I understand this, is this five foot herbaceous, so it's five feet between, I didn't think it was an existing stone driveway, I thought that um,
No, the stone driveway was built without a permit, which is why we made them submit an after-the-fact permit.
Okay.
During the discussion of the driveway, which is already there.
Um,
Rob Horgan felt that, because you're gonna have cars parking there now, which you're not, because you have a two-bedroom apartment. There should be a buffer between the wetlands and, and the, uh, and the driveway. And the consultant said he would come in with a plan, a planting plan, which never happened. Dennis said we had it, we didn't have it. Um, and there never was a plan, but the consultant just submitted that what's growing there now is a five-foot buffer, and I, I would agree that you don't need a planting plan if there's already natural vegetation that's healthy and vibrant. So now we have a map that shows that area won't be mowed, which was our concern, that they would make it into a lawn, and that, you know, we have a map that says it's there, it's gonna be there, and it, it's part of the approval of this application, if approved.
Yeah, I think the, the whole concept of a picture being worth a thousand words and, and having that um, outlined in the, uh, letter attached to the, um, the scientist report is very helpful for that, that purpose.
I agree.
And so, and I, I'm sorry, I haven't seen the report, I know you just flashed it up for the first time, it's hard to, um, I, I guess you're telling me that it just says to keep what's there, and, and that
Yeah, it's a letter, it's two, two paragraphs. It says he evaluated it, he, he did propose a buffer, but the buffer has grown in naturally over, over the past few months.
And do we think that this is year-round, these, this buffer? I mean, is, is, is it die-off in the winter? I mean?
Well, yeah, of course it will, so all the plants and
These are not
No, because all the tritus and, and roots and everything, uh, tend to keep things from getting in there, and the important thing is we didn't want it a lawn, or, or them to take up any more land towards the wetlands.
Okay, I, I guess I, I had a different impression as to what a herbaceous planting strip is, or, but, um, i- i- if the, if the expert is telling us it's exactly what grows there naturally today, then, um, I, I defer to the expert.
Is that it, Ca- Kathy?
Yeah.
Any other questions, or?
No.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns? Having here none, I'll look for a motion? Somebody, anybody?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this as an after-the-fact application, Russ?
Yes.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, do we need to put in there that, uh, approved based on the fact that, that, um, five-foot buffer will remain undisturbed?
It's probably a good idea to make it part of the motion, so that it's clear. Um, so John, you want to add that to your motion, please?
Yeah, I'll add, uh, to, uh, um, yeah, sorry, Sue, um, I'll add that condition that, uh, this, uh, five-foot buffer remain undisturbed.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morris, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Okay. Great. It took a while, but we got it done, that's what's important.
Okay, we're going to three oh seven Painter Hill.
Okay, uh, Kathy and I went out and, um, we learned a lot, we learned that what you see on a map isn't always what you have in nature. So if you want to go down, we met with Mark, Mark Oliveri, and Brian Neff was there, great to see Brian, and, um, and, and we, they, they want to just dig out, excavate the pond where the red is, the red riding, just that portion of it, because it's a big pond. And that portion of it is, it, it's really not that filled in, but the owner wants to, wants to dredge it. And, and that's his right, uh, it is a pristine pond, be, beautiful, I mean, just everything, it, the ecosystems are firing on all cylinders at this place. But the proposal was, is there, let's see. Ah, it looks different than what I saw in the field, right, Kat? Let me look at the map again.
Um, let me get back down there, let's see.
What they proposed is to put the is to put in a pipe, if you go down, down a little more, that's, there's the pipe, okay. They posed, proposed to, uh, at the time, they weren't proposing to replace the twenty-four-inch pipe. They were proposing to add on forty feet of that pipe, which happens to be a ravine, which happens to have the stream that comes out of the existing pipe, the outlet stream. They wanted to add another forty feet, and then take all the spoils and fill in that ravine. And that kind of bothered, uh, Kathy and I, actually, I didn't know that Kathy was bothered, but I was bothered, and I'm sure she was. Um, and we asked if there's a different way to do this, because I had a problem with taking forty feet of a stream and then filling in a whole ravine, uh, a deep, a deep ravine. And we all agreed that, um, Brian Neff, when he was there, he looked in the pipe and said, oh boy, this pipe's rusted on the bottom. And spillway structure, we don't really know what kind of condition that's in. So, w- we agree to be good to replace the existing pipe, uh, the, the, the exact length that it is today, uh, replace the outlet structure, it made sense to do that while they were gonna dig out dirt, and let's see, I'm trying to, and we agreed to put the spoils in that yellow area around the pond, that, now that might not look like a good idea in other ponds, but this is all flat there, and there's a couple really big white pines that are gonna die and come down anyway. So they're gonna remove a couple of the trees, put the so, spoils there with silt fence along the pond, and then seed it, and that's what the plan is, am I right, Mark, or did anything change since what we talked about on site? Mark, you there? You're, you're unmuted, Mark, you gotta unmute. There you go. I still can't hear you. Anybody here, Mark, or is it just me?
No, I don't hear him.
Um, is, is Frank or, uh, Brian here, or no, right?
No.
All right, well, anyway, that, that is the plan, you can see where they want to put the spoils, they initially proposed to take the existing pipe and go out forty feet, fill in that whole ravine, we didn't like that whole idea. Uh, where you see the pipe, there's a, looks like a little driveway, but it's not, that's the stream. That, those two lines are the stream. So, they're showing where the spoils are going. We agreed that to the right of the pipe, that needs to be built up anyway, because when the pond floods, it's flowing over that, and that's not a good, that's not a good situation. Now, up top to your, to your left, they're proposing to put a culvert in there, right now, the the culvert's all busted up, it's not in good shape, and it's not a big deal. To, to replace the culvert there, and then dig a sediment basin in front of it, so all the garbage and junk doesn't keep getting, blocking the pipe, causing that wetland to flood, and then going up and over the road, and then following that stream down into the pond, which is probably why the pond has a lot of sediment in it, at its, at its lower end there. So that's the plan, does anybody have any questions?
Ra- Russ, I just had a, a couple comments, um, uh, wh- when Brian went and looked at the, the, the pipe coming out of the pond, um, it was a metal pipe, I think it was eighteen inches, he proposed moving it up to twenty-four, as it shows here, and and changing it out to a, um, like a PVC pipe or something that's not gonna rust, and then I think when we talked about the spoils, as I recall, it was sort of in the, um, I don't know if that's on the left side of the pond in this picture, and then, you know, on the right side, but not, not around where, um, this, this, this drainage is occurring, right? It was really like two separate locations, to the right to, um, that, we agreed that, that it would fill in, um, some of, there's an existing, it's a, it's a secondary runoff there to the right. Um, and it has to remain a secondary runoff, right? So, it was to fill in a bit of that, um, ravine there, that's, that's part of the runoff on the right, and then they were gonna clear some trees and, and, um, and fill in on the left, but not at all around by where this, this, this drain is, as I recall.
No, I, I think, I think what I heard is they were gonna fill in there, but they would keep the spot, the secondary runoff, they would keep that lower. But it made sense to build up that section of the pond a little.
Okay.
But if we approved this, we could make a motion, uh, a, 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 uh, stipulation that they have to keep the secondary runoff. I, I'd recommend they put riprap there, so that it stays, because that secondary runoff, there's a little box, there's a little square right there for the commission to see. So a little square right there. If, if the primary outlet gets blocked, then the pond will go where that box is. And what we said is, we don't want that built up, that right where that box is, and maybe that's why that box is there. Because it needs secondary runoff, and then they asked us if they could fill in that ravine, and we said no to that. We said, but you can go a little farther on the pond and put the spoils there.
Yeah, so that would be good to clarify it in, in the motion, I guess.
Yeah. Anybody else have questions? Not that Mark could answer them, but? No?
No, I'm good.
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this application with the condition that the secondary outlet be riprapped, and no fill placed in that ten-foot wide area. Um, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Uh,
All of, go, go ahead.
Yep, no, no, I'm good, no discussion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed, so the motion carries, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to thirty-five Minor Bridge. It is a new application this month. For the relocation of existing retaining wall, new dry-laid walkway, reduce existing driveway, install new plantings, rear house landscape improvement, and new patio, and proposed changing room and storage structure.
Is somebody here for this application?
Uh, yes, excuse me, yes, I'm Chris Elko from Kent Greenhouse, I'd be representing the clients, Alan Stenberg and Daniel.
Okay, aye, yeah, yeah, good, good. Uh, Julie, would you go down so we could see the plan?
Yes. Yeah. My bad.
That's all right, take your time.
There we go, it's
a map we actually have to pull in a little.
Sierra, you and I were there, if you remember. So, so you, this is across from the park, from the Falls Park. I'm, I'm sure everybody knows. Um, you can see CLMP flagged, you know, CLMP went in or EverSource and cut down a bunch of trees and we issued a notice violation not real- realizing it was CLMP. And what the owners told us at the last meeting, they did want to stabilize the bank with new plantings. And, uh, Chris, it's Chris, is it?
Correct, yes, Chris.
Yeah, you wanna explain what they wanna do on, on this?
Sure, um, this is the survey showing existing conditions. Do you want to, can we go down to the next one, I believe?
Sure.
So, what we're representing in this photo is, you know, some things that, there was a initial application or approval for the addition to the house, which showed a lot more pavement, a different front walkway, um, and walls. And what we've done after being engaged by the client is redesign this. We're reducing the amount of asphalt, which is represented in the, the gray, uh, next to the yellow. All of that was going to be asphalt, and we're taking all that out, and it's a combination of planting and lawn going in there instead. Um, the front walls that were there and proposed to be put back, because some have been removed because of the construction. We're in a more curvilinear layout, and we've squared those off in order to get the a little more balanced, but they're in very similar areas. And the front walk comes off of the driveway a little differently than the proposed walkway. Um, it's a little larger than the proposed walkway, but it's brick set and stoned us, so it's dry laid.
The What's the yellow?
So the yellow is where the driveway is now. So we wanted to kind of show the difference between what was there, the reduced amount. I think it's around two thousand square feet, um, of asphalt that we're not putting back.
All right.
A little bit?
Sure.
So we see the plan. We don't need to see as much of river. We know what that looks like.
Um, so the Thank you. So the green area is representing more where we're not proposing to do very much there. It's been overgrown, uh, because of the construction. They have been living there, so it hasn't been maintained. So there has been some growth of bittersweet, things like that. It's fairly unkempt, as you probably saw when you were out there. Um, so that's really a matter of more maintenance than, you know, it's not a rehabilitation, it's cleaning it out. Um, there is some vinca kind of growing underneath it, um, dailies, but there is some native material, but the client would like it to ideally go back to what it was before they started this construction. Um, which, you know, is probably more representative of what was there a little farther upriver where it's shady and there's a lot of natural growth already. This has kind of been opened up and just over time and it's pretty weedy and invasive. So that, that's really what we're looking there.
Okay.
Um, the other comment, well, the other comments were in the backyard where we have to have access from the front to the back, so we're combining into what's already there. So in the lighter line weight, um, in the backyard that's existing. And then off the new addition, we're putting a small patio, um, which again is also a dry laid.
Is that the hatched area?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that would be bluestone and stoned us dry laid, and then we've got natural stone steppers going to the rear door. Um, the walls are just put back where they were, um, and tweaked a little bit, but not a major change in that layout. And then the, the other new item on here, which the commission has not seen, is they're interested in doing a pool. Not necessarily a pool house, but more of a storage changing room, which would be basically an open-air three-season structure that would have a changing room and a storage room. No, no bathrooms or anything like that. So that's representative.
Way back anyway, right?
Yeah.
Way back, yeah.
And that's not for now, that's for next year. But we wanted to put it in front of the commission, so you're aware of it.
Good idea. All right, we'll go out and look at it, and, um,
Question, Chris, um, so the area that was disturbed, you mentioned there's bittersweet coming in there and stuff?
Yeah, it wasn't as much disturbed as it was just let go. Um, so there's yes, there's some bittersweet, some other invasives that are down in there. I think there's some mugwort, things like that, so.
Yes, it was just gonna take over then, right?
Yes, so we'd like to ideally remove those and let any native things down, but, you know, obviously, being on the river, the client would also like to maintain their view of the river, um, as well, but they don't really you know, there's a, a, an existing lawn that goes along the top of the bank that goes back, so we're just adding that to connect to the driveway.
Okay.
All right, we'll go look at it, and then we'll, uh, meet next meeting, and, uh, if there's anything I see that, you, you know, I'll let you know, so you don't have to wait till a meeting.
Okay.
Um, but it should be pretty cut and dry, but we'll, we'll go look. Is there a process we need, or we just go look? Cause I know last time, nobody was living there.
Um, the client's currently not living there. It's not really habitable in the main house, because they're still working on it. There is a gate, um, with a gate code, which I can send to Karen to give to you guys, versus doing it in a public forum.
Yeah, yeah, send her the gate code, and we'll, we'll go down, take a look, and we'll meet next meeting. Okay, Chris?
Okay. Is there any timeframe? I know you have the latitude to go whenever, but just so I can make people aware that people are coming out?
Probably in the next week.
Okay.
You know, get it done right away and then go from there.
Okay, sounds great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's next, Julie?
W O report, John Cody's up.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Good evening, everyone. Um, there you go, Julie. That's the, um, the administrative permits that were issued for last month. There's only seven there, um, nothing really crazy, all small stuff. If you look on the fifteenth, I received a concern about quads being driven possibly through a wetland area on Falls Road. Um, I sent a letter to the person who was allegedly doing such. It was more of an informal letter just stating, you know, if you're doing such things, stop, or we'll have to make an action on that. On Sunday, I believe, last Sunday, I got an email from the complaint, and he said that he heard quads going through there again. So today, I sent an email to him, asking if I could access his property to go back and see what I can find. I'd never heard anything from the people who I sent the letter to, so my new approach would be go access from the neighbor's house.
Or go knock on the door, John. You can knock on the door. You're, you can't just go onto their property, obviously. But you could knock on the door, and, you know, whatever you see from there, you, you could say, hey, this needs to stop, and it needs to stop now.
I believe he has two properties there, and it's one that has no house on it or anything. And if, um, if I can get some photographs or something from the neighbor's property, I'd like to have a good jumping off point, but I'll, I'll, I'll attack. Go both ways, I don't mind.
All right, don't let it lie, though, because those things cause a lot of damage.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the longer we, the longer we wait, then no more damage will occur.
Yeah. And then, uh, to follow up on the Squire Road tree cutting on a Tierney Preserve, um, I've been in contact with the contractor and the homeowner.
Did they take the big tree out?
The big tree's out, but there's a lot of debris that's still there. I went there today, took a look, and there's a lot of residual stuff there. Um, so I asked John if he wanted to go take a look, and, um, what I wanna do is I wanna meet the homeowner and walk down there and actually show her what the concern is now.
Yeah, Russ, there, there's still some stuff on the wetlands property side. And, um, as John said, debris in the stream itself that's there because of the, the trees that they dumped there that allowed it to, to collect. And I was talking with, uh, Jamie, our land manager, and he said, yeah, you know, they, they should really clean that up.
Yeah, okay. She's very, uh, cooperative. I don't see a problem. We just need to get on it and make sure she knows and get it done.
Yes.
Before the next big storm, you know?
I'll be on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. What's next?
That's it.
No, I think I got some reporting to do.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, first I wanna welcome, uh, new member to the commission, Mark Zerby. Mark is, uh, lives on Weekly Road. Um, he was active during the woods application, so he may look familiar to you. Um, I asked him to join, cause Julie Martinelli uh, said she, she joined but couldn't make any meetings, cause it, because her kids were more of a more of work than she thought, sillier. But she had a lot of soccer stuff to go to, and I told her, you gotta come to a couple of meetings, and she, she just couldn't. So, I asked, uh, I asked Mark if he would be interested. He said he would. So, um, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we will be putting him on the commission. He'll be the eighth member and the third, uh, alternate member. So, welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mark. Long as the Board of Selectmen agree.
Oh, that, well, yeah, we will. We never. Um, but glad to have you on board, and, and we will do some things live. I'm thinking about having a wetlands party at my house in September on a nice uh, weekend afternoon, just to kinda talk to each other and have some social time together. Uh, so I'm planning on doing that. And, uh, and hopefully, everybody will be able to make it. I'll give some dates ahead of time so that, cause I'd like as many to come. I'd like everybody to come, so we could all really kinda be together and drink beer and not worry about, um, streams getting blocked up, you know? So. Um, the other report I found, did Karen, I'm pretty sure Karen sent you the report of wetland commissions in Connecticut that was done by the Western, uh, government, Council of Governments. We're part of the Northwest Council of Governments. The Western Council of Governments really is Fairfield County. Did, did everybody get a copy of that report?
I don't recall seeing it, Russ.
Yeah, I don't either.
I asked you. All right. Could you remind Karen to please send that on? Uh.
Okay, Western Council of Governments report.
Yeah, I, I emailed her the report, cause it came to me directly from the Western Council of Governments.
Okay.
And the report is an evaluation of our system, which they claim is not protective of the environment. That the present system of wetland commissions, uh, and what we're doing, it is not protective. And they list a bunch of reasons. One of them is training. They, they claim that commission members aren't trained enough. Presently, there's an eight-hour course online that's free and available to anyone who wants to take it, even the public. Before, it used to be, uh, one free person per town, and anybody else had to pay for it, which was a dumb idea. Um, but they got smart on that, so it's open to anybody. You just go on Deep's website, go to the web, uh, Wetland Home page, and there's the course. And only one person on the commission has to take it in the current law, and the wetland enforcement officer. Other members aren't required to take it. But, you know, they jump from one extreme to another. Um, by the way, these Council of Governments used to be one or two people. Now they're up to eight or nine. They got planners on it. And what I believe is happening, the state really wants us to go by counties and do away with local control, which is a bad idea, but it's a push by some liberals in Hartford, uh, who don't see local control as, as, as good. And it's great, local control. Connecticut is a great state because of it. So, they're adding on to these Council of Governments with planners and all these, like, look at the list of people that are part of it. It used to be one or two people. So that's what I think is behind this. Uh, but I, I don't disagree with a lot of what they're saying. But I don't think you go from eight hours for one person to forty hours of training for all people. That's crazy. They, they're forgetting we're volunteers. They absolutely have forgotten that, number one. Just make it eight hours, and everybody on a commission has a year to take that course. Seems simple enough to me. Another thing they're talking about, and I, they're not recommending it, but you, you know how these, you know how these people work. They're recommending doing away with commissions and making DEP do it, supporting DEP with, with, uh, resources to have six different, uh, areas. And if you have a wetlands thing, you submit it to that area office. Very similar to what the Army Corps of Engineers is now. You submit an application for the, to the Army Corps. There's no meetings. There's just back and forth. They comment on your application, and, and then you respond to those comments. So there's no public meetings. It's done through DEEP. I don't agree with that. I think the system I have in the community, who knows their wetlands and water courses, I think that system works better than DEEP does. And as an example, I'll give you, DEEP doesn't do a good job with pesticide applications. They issue pesticide applications to anybody or everybody. They issued one for Lake Laureate, where there was a school bordering it, and the school well. So I think that would be a catastrophe, because DEEP isn't managing anything all that well right now, if you ask me, especially on the wetland end. But the people on the wetland end, I'll give them this much, there's only two of them, I think, that's trying to service a hundred thirty-three different commissions. So I agree that DEEP needs more resources. But I think it needs the right people to manage it and not make it a bureaucracy, which that is what they seem to be good at lately. Filling out a lot of forms and not a lot's getting done for the environment. Um, they do make recommendations, which we already have taken on in Roxbury. Uh, they're recommending cutting commissions from eight people or seven people to five, which we're at five. That doesn't include the alternates. They're recommending that meetings be, uh, once a month. And that, and I like this recommendation, and that's small things, even if they're regulated. And they, they have a, a definition of what the small things would be, which now have to come to commissions, that the wetland enforcement officers are allowed to approve those. I like that idea. So, I, I think all of you would find it very interesting. It was, it was well-written. I know I like the best government, but, but I get a problem with, uh, the few telling the majority what, what should be, and I don't think they asked one person who served on a commission what they thought. But maybe that's what they want of the report. There is an email where you could comment, but I would rather that we all put our heads together and we comment as a commission, because it would be much stronger being a comment from a commission rather than us separately. So, I'll make sure Karen gets that to you by, she's in on Thursday, I believe. And, uh, take a look at it, and let's, let's all have a discussion next meeting and start formulating a, a response. I, I really think the report underestimates the brilliance of people on commissions, that I think they're a lot smarter in a lot of ways than some of the experts, cause they look at things practically, and they know their land, and they know their town. I think the experts are important, and, and the experts are good. But what I don't like about experts is how the two experts disagree so much. And one recommendation in the report is, the experts have to meet on their own and come to an agreement. I like that. Cause I don't understand how one expert could say, this is an intermittent stream, and another expert says, no, it isn't. I don't get that. And I, 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 I go in front of, I, I'm an expert for, for a lot of wetland commissions, and, and it boggles my mind, uh, that experts can't come to an agreement. So, read it. It's interesting. I, I commend the Western Council of Governments for doing this. I think it's great to start the discussion. And I think it's a great way for wetland commissions to shut down any talk. of having just experts approve, uh, approve permits through Deep. I, I think that's a bad idea. Now Vermont does that, they're using the Vermont system, that's what Vermont does. Vermont, everything is through the state, there, there are no local wetland commissions. The state of Vermont has four separate districts, you submit your application to the district you're in, and, and you work it out through letters or emails and not through public meetings. It may work in Vermont, because Vermont isn't overly developed, it's a much smaller state. And it's, it doesn't have all the development on, existing on the rivers like we do. So it may work in Vermont, I don't think it will work here, but I want all of you to formulate your own opinions, and, uh, and I'm looking forward to having the discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Russ. I, I look forward to, um, the opportunity to read, to read the report. You know, I, I think, um, forty, I think, I'll just say that any education is, is goodness, um, certainly for me personally in this space, I'm happy to, 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 you know, become smarter. So if they have some sort of, um, you know, offering, um, uh, that, for me personally, that, that may be helpful. And, and I guess I would also say that, you know, we're, we may be moving into, changing times with these water, um, rain situations that are really impacting our local community, and the broader communities for sure. And so maybe there's something there that's, um, helping us to, you know, sort of understand how to, how to, um, manage or reconcile some of these, um, um, water events that seem to be happening more and more frequently.
Yeah. Well, read it, and, uh, and then you'll, you'll formulate an opinion, and we'll go from there. The, the, uh, training that they're recommending be mandatory is the Army Corps of Engineers training. It's a forty-hour course online. It's not clear to me in the report whether they want that every year or once, but then they'll come out with refreshers. What the, what they don't talk about is the, uh, wetland group, you know, the group, I forget, the wetland, there's a group of wetlands that, you know, uh, every year they have an annual meeting, and everybody's invited to that on commissions, and they have different training sessions that you get to pick which ones you wanna go to. So to learn, that's already out there, that, that's already there through, through volunteer organizations. I, I just don't think a deep system would work in Connecticut. So. All right, I don't have anything else with that, I'll look for a, does anybody else have anything they wanna? Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn?
Oh, just on one, I missed the opportunity. Mark, welcome.
Thank you very much. I look forward to, uh, meeting you guys in person at some point especially, so. Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.